Isn't that your line Troy?
I think I have it laying on your desk there, but we'll swear you in. Yeah, I think it's underneath somewhere. I did give you one. Might be underneath some of that other stuff yet, underneath the maps. I know, that's as soon as we get. Ran out of that paper Cindy said she couldn't do that, so that's what you get now.
It's what is it?
Okay, I thought that I gave you one, I didn't, I'll get you. Yeah, well, I know I got the template of it, so yeah, we'll get it. Probably somewhere.
I gotta look. Did I have? I thought Charlie.
He's not in there.
Led.
Oh.
Yeah, he.
Gable.
But Charlie's not here, so it's you. I already got it all, I got it all read through and it's like, okay, I know he's gonna go on. It's gonna be. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, you better get that started, it's. Lifetime. It's nine o'clock, I'm gonna call the meeting of the Cottonton County Commissioners to order. On December thirty first, two thousand twenty four, if you please rise, I'll have our auditor Brendan lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Please. To the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Number, we'll move down to number two is a call for public comment, if somebody would like to make public comment, they can do so in person. Or they can do it via the telephone six oh five eight eight two six two four eight, or six oh five eight eight two six two nine seven. And if you have a cell phone, could you please silence it? And if you need to take a call, we'd appreciate if you do it in the hallway, thank you. Number three, is there any conflict of interests?
No.
No.
Okay. Number four, we need a motion to approve the December thirty first agenda. Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Number five, we need a motion to approve the December seventeenth minutes of the Cottonton County Commission. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we're down to number six, we're gonna now open. Up a public hearing on the HD Electric Cooperative. Franchise application.
Introduce myself, my name is Craig Evenson.
Go ahead and come on up here. Yeah, just come down and turn your mic on and. Grab this, yeah, grab a chair.
Nice to meet everybody here, my name is Craig Evenson, project attorney. I'm the project attorney for the, for HD Electric Cooperative Incorporated. With me today is Roger Cutshaw, the project engineer. And so today we're. Asking you to approve a franchise agreement so that HD Electric can. Ensure that. Its customers have reliability, there's an East River sub in Cottonton County. And what they intend to do is create a line that is gonna backfeed. Those customers, and what that does is allows them. Allows them to ensure electric services still to that, those customers, if there is an outage in a particular area. The. The thing I was gonna point out to Cottonton County. To you is that. We do have a franchise already with Cottonton County. And what we've decided is that it just makes sense to try to. Apply for all the franchise again rather than get a piecemeal application, so what we, you know, they're good for, I think it's twenty years. I think we're at like eleven years or something right now, so we're. The thing that we just decided was let's, let's go ahead and do it all again. And. Make sure. Everything's on track and we don't have. You know, we're not coming before you multiple times for multiple different. Projects, so. Does anybody have any questions over the? Application or any other? Technical pieces, great thing today is that we got the engineer here who can give you the, all the technical aspects, for me, I can talk to you about the legal side. We're in the public hearing part right now, so. I can show some, I mean, we can wait a little bit or I can show some of the.
Go ahead, show some of the maps so people can see what.
This is our exhibit that we put together or added in with the application, and this is just showing. Where those lines are either located or where they're gonna be proposed. This is a Cranbrook Township, and you can see the. The, the roads identified on the map, and Roger, would you?
That is currently a single service that HD Electric with discussions with Puddy and Clark. Picked up probably around the two thousand seven, two thousand eight, is Modak Dairy, which is this northeast of Cranford. That is the only service that we are providing electricity to over in that area, due to that agreement amongst the cooperatives when that dairy came in at that time.
Just for people watching, Mr. Chairman, for people watching, it's so that the dotted line is the thing you're talking about there.
The dotted line is the current line that we have that extends into Cottonton County to provide support for that member of ours. Yes, sir, that one is a buried line.
So is there going to be any new infrastructure added to this that would go across? Private property, all utilities meant?
At this time, we are planning to use the public right of way, I have a way, I have been working on the federal environmental reports. For a proposed route coming from the Sheridan substation, I have not coordinated that yet with the Cottonton County Department of Transportation. Because until we have this franchise agreement agreed to, and at that point I'll be working with them, but the intent is to be using the public right of way.
So I, I got a question, this, this dotted line here, is that? A proposed?
That there is the proposed Sheridan route that we plan to use, and it is going along Cottonton County county roads. That is not in place right now, but that is what we are proposing to do, yes, sir.
Cause that's, there's a brand new East River line on that.
Approximately a half mile farther to the east. That is correct.
Okay.
Oh, you're right, I take it you are correct.
Cause that's where I live.
Yes, they did add that in, what we are putting in though will be underground.
Oh, okay.
So.
I was just curious, it's like, I know that's a new East River line going to that substation down there.
Yes, what you, what you are seeing is that is an interconnection transmission line between, from the Sheridan sub going down to what we call the Dempster substation. As well as the Hayti substation, but now that is a transmission line running at approximately sixty nine thousand volts. We are running distribution lines predominantly underground in this area at seventy two hundred volts. To the customer, so we would not be able to tap off that line without, without the addition of a new substation. So, and a new substation costs about a million and a half dollars, it's actually more economically feasible to use the existing substation and put the line in from that.
So this will be buried in the right of way also?
Our, our line will be, yes, sir.
Okay, cause these poles are just in the person's property, just a little bit off the right of way.
That's why I was curious about that.
I mean, just so people know that, that's, cause I'm always watching and learning as, as the projects are done too, so.
Yep, you know, if we would ever go, we've certainly, if there's for some reason we would want to go onto the private side, and we'd certainly work with the owners and get the appropriate easements, but right now our intent is to use the public right of way.
Yeah, okay.
If you want to describe any more of these. Different township maps if you provide it, so. Pelican, so the, so the solid blue lines are overhead.
Those are overhead lines, most of those services that we have just happen to be just within Cottonton County that we're providing services to. Both in Pelican and Compeska Townships, there's a little bit of underground, most of it's overhead, now eventually when we come to replace those lines. We will, I fully expect we will replace them with underground and use those poles, now we again will be using the public right of ways for our distribution system.
So it's, you'll just plow it or. Splice tile, not, not tile it, but like plow it in, knife it in.
Yes, sir, very similar to a cable, very similar to a tile plow.
So it's gonna be pretty. Not very disruptive or anything.
No, we, we do not traditionally use a cable plow, and when we talk about that, we place these wires in a depth of approximately forty eight inches. Four feet, and when you look at the actual surface disturbance, we're talking like six to eight inch wide. And it's a disturbance, nothing is pulled up, and then to be honest, and the guys will generally drive over it once or twice. Press the top back down and you hardly know anything's been there, especially by the next year, the next time the grass grows up.
Yeah, if there's anyone that would like to call in or. Any. Buddy that's would like to comment, now is the time.
Our new highway superintendent is here, so we'd be working with them closely on this.
Okay, nice to meet you, sir.
Randy.
Like I said, just gonna wait and send you paperwork until this is approved.
Exchanging my email.
Well, if I, if there is any, no other comments, we'll close the portion of the public hearing and. Move down to number seven, we need action to approve this resolution twenty twenty four dash forty one.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen, is there any other questions at this time? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year as well here.
Well, move down to month, monthly reports and Andrew. Start us off.
Morning.
Morning, Andrew.
Ready for the weather change again, get a little cooler.
It's not a good way to start your report.
I'll go back. Uh, well, completed and met with Randy on our local capabilities and assessment for readiness, Elkar is what we typically call it. Really, it just goes over who we are, what our capabilities are, what capabilities are, you know, found locally in our jurisdiction, what agreements we have in place. Just really a variety of questions over preparedness, response, recovery, mitigation. If anybody's interested, you can feel free to, to stop by and kind of look at it, it's a, it's a questionnaire that, you know, kind of shows where we're at, you know. Take a few. Things that are kind of recommended and, you know, put those on board for, for improvement for next year, but really, I mean, overall, we look pretty good, I think. We had another grant award briefing, this time for a generator water tower, I may have mentioned it last time, very similar to the last one. Where the overhead lines, the burial project, just again going over. Responsibilities for, for me locally and the recipient of, of the grant. So, yeah, that one's for a generator for a water tower. We had a second meeting with Red Cross, this time involving people from. Watertown Parks and Rec and. The Extension Center and Facilities. They did give us a. A copy of, of an agreement that we have there. I mean, Steve and I discussed it overall, I mean. Recommend. I mean, we didn't see anything that, that really stood out as being outside of what we anticipated, like in such an agreement. But getting the memorandum established, just helps them with their planning purposes and knowing what they can count on. If they were to be asked to, to stand up a shelter location here in town. But, yeah, I mean, aside from that, I mean, we, we. Kind of showed them around the, the facility, they were, they were very impressed with. With how the Extension Center looked, and then we. We showed them. The, the city auditorium as well as, as kind of a secondary location and one on the side of the big zoo. Other than that. Search and rescue guys, they've been kind of keeping me on my toes. I mean, there's a lot of good momentum that, that the team has, I mean, we've got a few younger members that are enthusiastic and. I mean, doing stuff like getting startup procedures for the drone, like all, you know, laid out and in no cards, you know, close to it. And, you know, different, different things like that where, like, where younger members can, can kind of see what to do, and I mean, the drone's gonna be flown by, you know, a part one oh seven certified pilot. But having those procedures there can help them get things set up, you know, in advance if we're waiting for somebody. Lights for, for a few of, like the four wheelers and stuff like that, like. They've got. Plans for those as well, we had to replace drone batteries that ended up being a little bit more of. Like the ones that they sent us were bad, and then we had to, like, work not with the people that we bought them from, but then with DJI and, you know, like, they weren't initially going to. It, it was a thing. But. This ultimately, we did get the new batteries for them and so forth. I guess other things, you know, getting, getting the right diesel and generators, defensive driving. Following up on two of our homeland security projects have been a little bit more cumbersome this time. This year, and then gone through a few sections of our local emergency operations plan. I know I talked about getting that done a while back and it's had to, kept getting shuffled back a little bit, but I've been bugging away on that as well.
Pretty thorough plan.
It's.
So there's probably, is there a lot of changes in it from last time?
Um, so they wanted to. They're hoping, well, I mean, there's a couple other annexes that we want to get added into it, so I have a template that I'm working with, so. I mean, it's not. It's not just all like me, like trying to come up with. You know, the whole thing or anything, but. I guess pending your questions, that's all I have for today.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Andrew. Oh. Yeah, let's discussion possible action on to approve facility use agreement. Addendum with the national, American National Red Cross.
Not really, I mean, Steve, there wasn't anything in here that. Drew. I mean, yeah, a lot of it is. I mean, points of contact. Kind of what the terms are, I mean, ultimately. We're not charging them a fee for use of the facility or to, to use the facility to house our people, I guess. But. I mean, there's. I don't know, like, like. Anything above and beyond like our typical water, gas, electricity may be reimbursed. But I mean, they may, may request supporting documentation.
Right, yeah, absolutely, so just.
And the one thing to point out, if there are functions that I have a schedule and so I add, if there's case emergency that there access to be able to utilize this building.
So.
Yeah, we. Yeah, well, and we, we kind of talked about that, there is a, there is a pet addendum in there. So, I mean, it just kind of goes over, like, can they have pets there, understanding that pets would, you know, be. Secured either by a leash or in a carrier, you know, and so forth.
Chair, do we need to take these as separate items, the pet addendum in the contract with the Red Cross or?
I think one would be.
The only question I have, is this something you want the state's attorney to look over, is it something that you feel she should at all?
Agreement to me.
That's pretty plain, I think I read through it, that's. Now the facility became eligible for Red Cross after the sprinkler system was put in, was that part of it?
What's that?
The sprinkler system out there, after that was in place and that became a viable facility.
Right, yep, and that's more or less that was a viable facility in case like, for a hospital type situation, you know, this all developed from when. Or engineers came in for COVID and all that, and those were kind of some of the standards that it wasn't meeting, now with this, this will get the facility up for more or less. On, on this basis for them.
I'll make a motion to approve the agreement.
I'll second that.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Johnson, any other? Questions?
We appreciate the partnership.
Yeah, I just think it's now is the time before there's a.
Yeah, I.
Incident to, to, to make the plan, so we, nobody scrambling and it's just good foresight to do that.
Finding out from the predecessor, Emergent Manager Jim said there was something in place years ago, but it kind of got lost.
Yeah.
In, in everything, so this is just kind of regroup everything to get it back into.
So how often will this need to be? Updated, is this an annual agreement or?
Now, they said that moving forward, they hope that it is an annual thing that they would, they would come back and review it, so.
When did they do their inspections, you mentioned. When was that?
Yeah, about first part of December.
Now, Andrew, will you be the point? On this project, this, who they, who, okay, it's an emergency, who are they gonna call?
Yeah, I suppose I'd, I'd be a probably a pretty good point of contact and I can, I can get.
Steve or?
I can get reached out to, to him.
I know, it, it says on there, who is the contact person?
I questioned it too, they were, they were going to send us a digital copy, so I didn't bother filling it all out, but I was like, geez, what am I gonna put here?
Oh, we can help you with that.
There you go, all right, well, it sounds like it's been decided.
Andrew.
Okay, if there's no other questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Alrighty.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Happy New Year.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have his, I have his data sheet, he asked me to go over that.
Okay, then if Lee, if you want to do that for the sheriff's report.
Yeah, just. Going over the statistics, you guys can understand this as well, if I can, I think so. Take a lot of deer accidents, so thirty six, thirty six accident calls, yes, and that's deer. One thousand five hundred thirty six miles traveled, so put it down, and then the ADP in the jail is fifty two point eight, so that's about what it was last time. But the bookings are one hundred and sixty eight. And then we can see the collections there, so a lot of other kind of conflicts. I don't know if I can answer any questions. So, and this on the jails, sure, sure, we have our next design committee Tuesday afternoon, so that's a team's meeting. So again, the big thing with the jail, which, the work, the things wrong now is. We're not at schematic design where they're actually, not quite ready to watch it, but blueprint drawing as I, as I understand it, but we're doing a site plan, so what, what the layout of the site is gonna be. So, where the road is gonna go, we have to approach this. Work it through that.
Okay, thanks, Commissioner Gable. Let's move down to number ten, Randy, if you'll come up, we need action to approve a bid for Cottonton County fifteen dash one fifty nine dash hundred. Riprap repair project.
This is for the bridge just west of the casino on one hundred and sixty fourth street or County Road six five. Previously, it's been approved as far as the engineering through Banner. We sent out for bids and we only received one back. That was from Basin Construction out of Hayti. For the total amount of ninety six thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars. They hope if they do get the bid to start. After the first of the year, and it should be completed by February twenty eighth, weather permitting. So far, everything looks good, they said they may have to put down some blankets in order to keep the soil soft and workable, so they can get in there and lay the riff ramp. We've already got permission from the landowners to access their property if need be.
Correct. Yep, so the amount we're talking about, since I don't, I don't have it on the screens. Ninety six thousand eight hundred and eighteen.
Correct.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen. Any further questions?
Now, that's in the twenty twenty four budget.
The engineering was, but the actual riprap will come out of the twenty five budget.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the. The riprap would be that sixty five seven, and then the twenty one sixty, right? Okay. So about sixty eight thousand, sixty nine thousand.
Give or take.
Okay.
Any further questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Happy New Year.
And moving down to number eleven. Need a motion to declare office equipment at the Extension Office surplus to be destroyed. Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Any other? Questions? You can see what it. Some monitor, I guess.
I never heard of that before. I never heard of that before.
Hans, Hans, Hans G.
You probably won't hear of it again.
Yeah. It's old, old stuff. That's probably some stuff Bob sure had.
Yeah, we, who made the? We made them, somebody, yeah, yeah, we got them all.
Good motion in the sun.
Yeah. Any other questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Hey, number twelve. Action to authorize chair to sign contract with the South Dakota or state of South Dakota for community health nurse services.
You have that in your, uh, packet of information and the amount remain the same again, we'll pay up, uh, a total of fifteen thousand three hundred seventy nine dollars and fifty four cents. In installments of three thousand eight hundred forty four dollars and eighty nine cents in January, April, July, and then October to the South Dakota State Department of Health.
Looked approved.
Second, motion by Johnson, second by Van Dusen. Any other questions?
Uh, you can see it's a state contract and 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 they, it's a little bit easier on the trees. I, I, it's exactly the same as the last year's contract, and they could have just had one word said ditto. You know, but they sent a lots of lots of information, but they cover every, uh, I did review it, uh. I looked at it compared to last year's and it is the same word for word, word for word, yeah.
It's nice, the amount did not change.
The amount was same, it didn't.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, number thirteen, um, discussion possible action to designate weed board serving area, Steve. We all have the new colorful map.
You guys should have our own new colorful map, um, I had to put designate in some, um, people in areas and so that that they have to reside in certain areas, so. What you have in front of you is is the areas of of the, um, members right now, the one though, number five is the one that is willing to be on the board. So that, so what I have together here, try to get it proportioned somewhat that I could for for the to be assigned on the.
We'll make a motion to approve this.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Gable. Any other questions for Steve?
This will be good.
Yeah, I like how you got it.
It's digitalized.
It looks good.
Yeah, I like.
I gave, I gave you piece paper, everything else is digitalized.
It, it looks like it's split up and.
Yeah, I tried to get it as appropriate as I could, so, yep.
Any other questions for Steve? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Let's give over fourteen.
Steve, Steve, Steve.
Oh, okay.
So JT is.
So we'll move down to fifteen. Uh. Action to designate surplus funds for future building projects.
Yes, so, uh, this is something that we need to do each year, our amount again remains the same as it has for the last several years. And that amount then that will be assigned on designated cash is in the amount of eight million six hundred thousand six hundred nineteen dollars to be assigned to the future building projects.
So that's.
Oh, yes.
So that's, that's the total amount that's gonna be in there, not, not additional.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes.
Does that, does that change slightly, that change slightly?
Nope, it stayed the same, um. And with our project going forward, we'll have to see, you know, after the first of the year, so. Yeah, we'll just leave it where it's at right now because I don't know what those numbers will be for.
What, what was that total again?
Eight million six hundred thousand six hundred nineteen dollars and zero cents.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen. Any other questions?
Just a comment, Mr. Chair, so just, and when we talked about the jail bond and the way we arrived at the jail bond amount, even though the overall cost of is approaching, what, thirty nine and something for the overall cost of the project, so we, we asked the voters to approve. Just under thirty million and the, and so the difference is made up with with seven million, I can't remember the exact, we're seven million and something.
Yeah.
Of that eight million that that were, that were in the process of talking about right now. So that would.
To sum over seven.
Little over, it leaves a little over a million in the, in the fund when the jail is done, this is, this is fine now.
I, I, I'd like to make a comment.
Yep.
This, we need to, we need to thank our employees, our department heads, because that's where the money comes, the overruns, they, we are able to put it into that fund. And, uh, when we approve those budgets and they are able to stay under what that budget indicates that they're going to spend and that access is able to go into that fund. Now, that, that fund is kind of sacred too, uh, Mr. Gable, uh, and, and, you know, we allow you so much money and that's it.
That's what it's worth.
Yeah, and, and, uh, so. You know, we've worked hard over the years to build that fund up and we want to make certain, we don't want to run bare bones and run out of money. So that's a, a fund that's there for, uh, very, very good purposes, we, we never know what's gonna happen, there could be a natural catastrophe and we may not, uh. Do a rebuild in the courthouse or something like that, so it, it's just something that, uh, it's always been good to have that. Uh, fund available for us in case we had an emergency, but that's what it's there for, to use it. And so using a portion of it is fine, I'm all right with that, not all of it, just a portion of it.
Yes.
So, so the, the other, the other major surplus fund that we have is the program insurance, which is what thirty percent of the. So.
Yes, but.
It's not as big as this one, I know that.
No.
And that's, that's because with the state auditor, if you audit, we have a designated purpose for something that's fine, so that we don't have to see that off of the program surplus. So that's where, that's where this has been very useful, we have to save for this, you know, for the jail or, you know, or the going projects.
Any other questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, number sixteen, action to approve commissioner contingency transfers.
Okay, so we have four budgets that will need to, uh, transfer commissioner contingency budget amounts into, um. The total amount that is left in commissioner contingency, I gave you that information is two hundred nineteen thousand seven twenty seven eighty one. The only thing that you have used commissioner contingency for this year was for the coroner's vehicle and insurance. So the four budgets that will need to have you approve to, um. Uh, move that money over into is the commissioner budget in the amount of forty four thousand dollars. Court appointed attorney budget for four thousand dollars. The county nurse budget, four thousand five hundred dollars. And then the E nine one one in the amount of eighteen thousand dollars, and the reason for that is it was the un- anticipated raise in the, um. Nine one one surplus or the, the amount that we've, um, put over to the city, but in order to make that budget whole, we need to, uh, put this amount in there, so it is just a pass through, but it's just part of the.
How much was that?
Eighteen thousand, so the total amount. That will go from commissioner contingency into these budgets is seventy thousand five hundred dollars.
Do I need to excuse myself from this?
Maybe it would be a good idea.
I'll recuse myself.
Yeah.
What, what, uh, since it's all pass through.
It's still just to keep it, but because it's a negative, because we've been coming out of that budget, we didn't plan on enough revenue for, so.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
Because we're getting, we're taking in more through the pass through.
Yeah.
I'm just making sure that.
Yeah.
Motion by.
What we could do is just separate off the E nine one one, then you can vote on the rest.
Break it in.
Yeah, so let's just, okay, yeah, so let's just do the other three then, um, the commissioner budget, court appointed and county nurse. Okay.
I'll second the motion.
Motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen to approve those three.
We should probably have a total of that, did he add that? That forty four, forty eight, and fifty two five.
Yeah, that's minus eighteen thousand.
Yeah. So, okay.
Yeah, all, uh, any other questions on that? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries, now we need another motion for the.
Almost.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable.
That amount of the eighteen thousand.
Yep, simple math there.
There's no further questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Let's move down to number seventeen, action to approve the twenty twenty five wage scale.
And you have that in front of you and that does include the four percent increase that you approved of salaries except for yours, which you were beside in January first meeting.
Motion by Gable.
Um, oh, second.
Second by Johnson. Any other questions? All pretty straightforward, it's already things that we. Discussion, huh? No more questions, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We have no agreement.
Number nineteen.
We do have claims, so we have salary claims, first of all, that need to be approved for the December twenty fourth, um, payroll in the amount of seven hundred ninety one thousand eight hundred fifty five dollars.
Second. Motion by Gable, second by Van Dusen. Have a question on those. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Then you also have, um, claims for our last minute, um. Claims that everyone would like to get paid with, with this year's budgets and that is in the amount of three hundred sixty one thousand five hundred sixty eight dollars and eighty seven cents. And if anyone has any questions about any of them, feel free to ask.
Yep, there's a, you should have a.
Free page.
Okay.
Yep. That came in later, so I didn't get a part of the package, so it's just on your desk. Free pages.
How are we, there's another question kind of ahead, how are we doing on John? We're beautifully here and now. With the, that's always been that. The biggie.
All right, currently, as far as Johnson and Coles' goals, there's probably about eighteen hundred dollars left, um, here for the HVAC to be paid for. Um, and out at the extension building, the, um, uh, sprinkler system is that's, this will cover all of that, so that will be zero, so. Um, actually, it looked pretty good on my budget and so that for the egg building, what I have unspent into that and also here in the courthouse, so. Yeah, um, yep, it'd be all out of that budget, the only thing that's remaining, so we had for Johnson Controls would be is, um, the last half of the generator that gets installed. Um, and this, this coming spring or late winter, so. That's a separate, yep.
So how, how is the project coming?
They are just about completely, almost completely done out at the egg building for the sprinkler system, they were doing some final stuff here this past, past week, so. Here, um, just got some few little touchups to do and so we had, um, the, um, the guy's wrapping the pipe, gotta come back, a couple little things and a couple small little details and so we had, otherwise, by and large, it's pretty well complete, we did the checklist here a little over weeks ago, so. There'll be, yeah, there's gonna be a little bit more.
Say about eighteen hundred.
Yeah, about eighteen hundred. Yep.
I'd make one other comment. The new handicap lift for the, uh, south entrance of the courthouse. Uh, I cleared up the position call the other day and we used it and it works well.
Yes.
It is easy to operate and it's a slicker than this.
Yep, it's pretty quiet, it's a hydraulic one driven, so where the other one was a motor operated, this is hydraulic driven, so it is very stable and and very, very quiet.
Easy to operate.
Yes.
Yeah, so, and just encourage people to use it, you know, use that.
Yes, yep. Especially if you have, we've been walking or something like, used to that. We already, we already. All of them. Oh.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Johnson. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
We do have an automatic budget, oh, yes, automatic budget supplement, uh, this is for the emergency management budget and. This amount is for the estimated reimbursement from the state of South Dakota for some grants that they have submitted but haven't received the funding back yet, but we need to do this budget supplement to, uh. Um, make their budget whole as well, in the amount of sixty five thousand four hundred eighty five dollars and eighty one cents.
Motion by Gable.
Second.
Second by Van Dusen.
When do we anticipate getting?
It'll, it'll be into the next year, but so we wanted to close out this year, right, but yes, it's, they have cash, but we, uh, wanted to put that back in.
Other questions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Twenty one, action to approve personnel.
Yeah, we have one of those. And that is for Randy Falway, yeah, for the highway superintendent position effective January one, twenty twenty five. Um, he will be at step one, the new pay rate is seven thousand three hundred and two thousand six a month for eighty seven ninety eight thirty two a year.
Move to approve.
Motion by Van Dusen, second by Johnson. The other comments?
All for board.
Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. For twenty two.
Yes, there was two for the community service office, um, one is for the region rural grant and then, um, a child baby, uh, twenty twenty four children.
Both are true.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable. Question. Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That, it's, uh, it was taken care of, yeah, yeah, it was just put on, wasn't really sure what was all needed, so, yeah. But I can explain, that is like, uh, it will be a, kind of like a poverty simulator, so it was kind of, yeah.
Twenty three, public notices, possible formal. Hey, uh, let's move down to twenty five, is there? Yeah. Yeah.
One, two, one, the bottom.
Oh, I didn't, I didn't, yeah, it's like I'm missing, that's not on there. But I know it shouldn't be there.
Yeah.
Uh, is there any old business?
It's, the chair, it's not really a little bit, but uh. Some of you uh, here, some of you had listed, I think, but uh, when we had that Christmas party, um. The choir for the high school. What's the name of that choir? They.
Like an honors choir?
It's uh, it's the uh, there's a name for it, but anyway, they uh, on the. Elkton, the Christmas spirit, Saint Christmas, you know, and I know something you gave what, I think they left it there. You were brought here, but there it was beautiful, we just want to say that, thank you all, it's nice to be doing that, that was very, very nice and. Very festive, for the Christmas Eve, and the wedding, and then paying Christmas for the day, the costumes are beautiful, absolutely beautiful. And it's so much of a thank you, Alex, and you bring us, we like to celebrate, so.
So on that note too, Mr. Chair, if I could, had um, had rotary here a couple weeks ago, we heard from the Great Plains Lutheran School choir. As well, not. Player, but I mean, those kids are so talented and and we're gonna.
Also, I know that uh. Thanks for the water, but I didn't hear today, uh, it wasn't in my class. Maybe, uh, there's uh. But I think you need a. Appreciate what he did, so uh.
Hey, let's move down to new bit. Bring new business. Seeing none, we'll move down to uh twenty six, time for the open. Public comment. Quiet on the last day of the year. All public comments, any other commissioner comments?
Well, we did get the W, only get your hospital training. Certificate, this major service, like a charity company, and get a reduction.
I already checked, mine doesn't honor that. Just for the record, not all of them do.
I don't either, but it's fun to flash, it's fun to.
Okay, uh. A. Executive session.
Okay, good.
Motion by Johnson, second by Gable, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Eating the turn.
Happy New Year.